So the Oatana City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 6, 2017 to order. Could I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Voss.
Here.
Okaberg.
Here.
Dotson.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
And Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Coats.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Would all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, tear a flag.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, on a beautiful night in Oatana. The first thing on the agenda, we have a couple items to add. It's two items to the consent agenda. It's 2.2, 0.11 for retail fireworks sales to Sterling Drug and 2.5, 0.1, 0.1, change order number two for the regional stormwater pond. With those changes, I would look for approval of the agenda.
Some motion.
Motion by Nate.
Second.
Second by Brent. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, the first thing we got to do tonight is we have an award of excellence to be handed out by the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association. I believe we have someone here for them. If you come forward and come to the microphone here.
Mayor and council members, my name is Joey Shugel. I'm the recreation supervisor for the city of New Ulm, but tonight here on behalf of the Minnesota Park and Rec Association Awards Committee. And it's an honor to be here tonight to present 2016 Minnesota Recreation and Park Association Award of Excellence to Oatana Parks and Recreation. However, before I do that, I'd like to take a few minutes and tell you about the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association. The Minnesota Recreation Park Association was formed in 1937 to foster the growth and development of parks and recreation profession throughout the state. Presently, we have around 850 professional, corporate, board commission, student, and retiree members throughout the state. Members of the association come from municipal, county, state, district, and commercial and private agencies. The Minnesota Recreation and Park Association office is located in Fridley. The MRPA Awards Committee was created in 1987 with the purpose of acknowledging individual members and agencies for their excellence in the fields of parks and recreation and leisure services. Awards Committee members represent a cross-section of association members throughout the state of Minnesota. The awards committee feels it is important to increase awareness of the appreciation of the excellent parks, trails, facilities, and recreation programs and services that occur in the state of Minnesota. This is why the Awards of Excellence program was created. The Awards of Excellence program is an annual program of the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association that was solely created to recognize agencies and their staff for an exemplary project that was either implemented in 2016 or received substantial revisions in 2016. MRPA members may nominate a project for an award of excellence in seven different categories: administrative or management strategies, communications, park and facility, program and events, sponsorships and partnerships, sustainability, and volunteer initiatives. Nominations received are then reviewed, evaluated, and scored by awards committee members. Only the top-scoring nominations are selected to receive the award of excellence recognition. So on behalf of MRPA Awards Committee, it is my pleasure tonight to present the award of excellence for the Oatana Parks and Recreation Department for its winning project at J.C. Park Pavilion. The MRPA Awards Committee would also like to recognize Mary Jo Knudsen, who nominated this project for an award of excellence. So in just a little, as an award member, something that really stood out about this project when we were scoring is the community impact it had and the amount of different community organizations working together to create, to make this project happen. So I'd like to present it to Park and Rec staff right now.
I'd like, yeah, Jesse, come on up. Jesse Wilker was the kind of the ramrod for this project, so we're very proud of him. Thank you very much. That was a great project, and every time I drive by, I see there's people there using it and enjoying it. And thank you to the staff and you, Jesse, for everything. Thank you. Okay, Jesse, you want to say anything?
No. That's over. It's a good project, though. I'm glad. Tom Owen was great to get everybody. Well, there's a lot of organizations, you know, a lot of city departments, street department, parks, engineering, government buildings, and the Straight River women that they donated and pulled in blood, and then went through, well, they donated a lot, and so that was a good project.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, now we have one more award, an outstanding service award, and I think the chief is, police chief's going to do this.
Do you mind if we stand over here so everybody can kind of see? This is Commander Drank. He heads up our drug task force. This is Captain Jeff Mundell. He heads up our detective bureau. And of course, I'm the police chief, Keith Hiller. And tonight, we want to bring up Bill. So Bill, would you mind just kind of coming right up here? We have some fantastic community members who make us a wonderful place to work, live, and enjoy recreation. But there are times when one steps up and does something that all of us here in Blues and our community really appreciate. So I want to read this, if you don't mind, and bear with me, okay? Outstanding service. Certificate of recognition awarded to Bill Rosenau for outstanding citizen involvement on Monday, May 8, 2017. The South Central Drug Investigative Unit and the Cannon River Drug and Violent Offender Task Force were in the midst of a drug operation in Faribault, Minnesota. A lengthy operation led to a drug courier transporting narcotics from Chicago, Illinois to southern Minnesota. This culminated on May 8, 2017 during the purchase of $2,000 worth of drugs. At the end of the hand-to-hand drug sale, the suspect fled in a motor vehicle at a high rate of speed, followed by a foot chase. The suspect fled across both northbound and southbound lanes of Interstate 35, nearly being struck by traveling vehicles. Mr. Rosenau stopped his vehicle, motioned to pursuing agents the last known whereabouts of the suspect. The suspect resisted agents, and Mr. Rosenau climbed a five-foot fence and assisted agents apprehend the suspect. Mr. Rosenau is to be commended for his instinctive response, for his duty to community, and for his willingness to persevere under difficult circumstances. He has set a wonderful example for his fellow citizens and is admired by the law enforcement professionals at the Oatana Police Department. So we'd like to thank you a lot. You're the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Bill.
There's a microphone, Bill.
Bill, you want to say? The floor is yours right now. Okay. Okay. Next, we go to the mayor. Tom, do you have some things for us tonight?
I've got a couple of appointments, and they will be sworn in at their meetings. I am recommending Justin Lundy for the Airport Commission and Ryan Valesby for the Human Rights Commission. The other, Kate, for the HRA, and the two downtown parking committee members need a little bit more convincing to say yes to, so the only two I'll recommend tonight is Justin and Ryan.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion to approve those two appointments.
Some move.
Motion by Nate, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, congratulations, Tom. You got two more, Phil.
Yep. And three more coming for the next meeting.
Anything else from you?
Nope.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Those are items that include minutes, permits, licenses, monthly reports, other contracts and agreements that are all lumped together, that are given to the council ahead of time for us to review, and we vote on them in a lump sum. So I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. President, due to 2.5, 0.2, I will have to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, thank you. So looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Brent to approve the consent agenda, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we move on to action items. First thing on the action item is the finance report, and we'll go to Vice President Rainey to read the report.
Thank you. Checks over $20,000 tonight are as follows: $48,118 to the Rice Lake Street property, the NOS property; $20,532 US Bank, that's the monthly credit card statement; $108,653,000 Southeast Service Cooperative, that's the monthly insurance premiums; other expenditures tonight: $236,429, for a total tonight of $417,734.45.
Thank you, Kevin. You've heard the finance report. Any further discussion on that? There being none, I'd look for an approval.
Motion to take bills.
Motion by Jeff to approve the finance report, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. There being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. The first three will lump together, 3.4, 0.1, 0.2, and 0.3, and they all pertain to Country Creek Edition, and we'll go to Troy for this.
You're skipping over 3.2.
3.2.
Our hiking.
Oh, thanks.
Just forget about that one.
No, I can't forget about that one. I'm sorry. I missed that one. The contract, item 3.2 is the contract for concessions at the Lake Colmire Beach by the Hy-Vee Food Store, and we're going to...
Well, you can start with me.
Okay.
Staff has been working with some folks over at Hy-Vee, and they were interested in starting some concessions out at Lake Colmire on the weekends. So our staff has been kind of trying to fine-tune the contract, and it is at Hy-Vee Corporate. They're waiting to hear back. It has been reviewed by Mark. Some changes have been made, and I think we could approve it contingent upon receiving the proper insurance and making sure that we have all of our language changes in there. And I don't know, Mark, if you have anything to add?
There were just, this contract, you know, came up to you two weeks ago, and in reviewing it, I noted that the insurance requirements were, had not been brought up to date, and we wanted to make it conform to the insurance requirements that the Martins have at the Morehouse Chalet. It's a similar concession affair. And also because the caps on municipal liability, you know, have been raised now to 1.5 million, so we wanted to be assured that there was coverages available, there were coverages available in the event, so that we wouldn't have a shortfall of coverage. I reviewed the matter with Dave Efforts, our insurance advisor, and we provided the same insurance limits of coverages and the necessary coverages that we have in the Martin contract, and those were the changes. It was sent off, I think, probably Wednesday or Thursday last week down to Hy-Vee, and I guess they're looking at it now. So we could approve it, subject to their acceptance of these changes. So it's a conditional approval, and then when we get the certificate of insurance that satisfies us, then we could go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Everybody understands that? Any questions for Mark and that? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to approve the contract.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve the contract for concessions at Lake Colmire, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we can go on to the next one. Everybody's now looking at me funny right now, like, what is he doing? We'll go to Troy for the next three items, 3.4, 0.1, 0.2, and 0.3 in regards to the Country Creek Edition.
Well, I appreciate the attempt to try to move me up in the agenda. So, yeah, the next three agenda items all pertain to Country Creek number seven. These are all second readings. We had the first readings at the last council meeting. The first is the vacation of a portion of drainage and utility easements for Country Creek number six. This is sort of the clean, vacate the utility easements so that we can re-establish them with the new lot lines in the plat. The second is the rezoning of a portion of the property from R3, single-family residential to R1, single-family. The whole point of all three of these requests is to, is to change the subdivision from eight twin homes in one single-family lot to five patio homes and three single-family lots. So to align the zones, zoning district to the lot lines, there is a slight rezoning from R3 to R1 in part of the subdivision. And then the last one would be the final plat of Country Creek number seven, which is establishing the new easements and the new lot lines for the five patio homes and three single-family lots.
Thank you, Troy. Are there any questions of Troy on this, on these items? Being none, we'll take them in order. The first one is proposed ordinance 8-17, which is a second reading to vacate the drainage and utility easements for Country Creek number six. What are the council's wishes on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion? There being none, this is an ordinance, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Voss.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
This motion carries. Next item is proposed ordinance 9-17, which is a second reading of Z-334, to rezone the property on Evergreen Place to R1, single-family residential. Do I hear a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion? There being none, this is an ordinance, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Voss.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
This motion carries. Next item is proposed ordinance 9-17, which is a second reading of Z-334, to rezone the property on Evergreen Place to R1, single-family residential. Do I hear a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There being none, again, this is an ordinance, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Voss.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. And the last part of this is Resolution 59-17, which is the final plat, final plat for Country Creek number seven. And what do I hear for this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave to approve.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next three items, 3.4, 0.4, 0.5, and 0.6, in regards to Majestic Oaks, and we'll go back to you, Troy.
Okay, this is a very similar request to the last by REO Development Group. Again, the intent here is to switch from twin townhomes to single-family patio homes. So again, there would be a vacation of the portion of drainage and utility easements within Majestic Oaks subdivision. There would be a rezoning of part of the, part of the property from R3 to R1, and then also the final plat of, of the plat here, Majestic Oaks, number two.
Okay, any questions of Troy on this matter?
Motion to approve.
We're going to take them in order, Kevin, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Proposed, first one is proposed ordinance 10-17, the second reading to vacate the drainage and utility easement on Majestic Oaks.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Kevin makes a motion on that, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, this is an ordinance, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Voss.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. And the final part of this is Resolution 60-17, which is the final plant for, final plat for Majestic Oaks. And what do I hear? Do I hear a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve the final plat, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is 3.4, 0.7, proposed ordinance 12-17, which is a second reading on vacating the drainage and utility easement at Lot 5, Block 3, Cedar Dale Edition number two. This will go to Troy on, and I will have to recuse myself because I am the property owner, and I'll turn the meeting over to Kevin.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the second reading. We had the first reading at the last council meeting. As part of the southeast stormwater project last year, some of the storm sewer was realigned as part of obtaining new easements. There was an agreement that we would vacate unused utility easements, and this is just a follow-through on that to vacate the unused easements. What's council's wishes on this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave Burbank to approve.
Second.
Second by Doug Voss. This being an ordinance, ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Voss.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
We have six ayes approving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next item is 3.4, 0.8, proposed ordinance 13-17, which is a second reading to vacate the drainage and utility easement at Lot 15, Block 3, Cedar Dale Edition number three. And to you, Troy.
And again, this is the same request. This is just the property right next door with the realignment of some of the storm sewer. We have some unused utility easements that were agreed upon to be vacated as, as part of the project, so staff would recommend approval of this easement.
Any questions of Troy? There being none, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve proposed ordinance 13-17.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? There being none, this is an ordinance, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Voss.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 3.4, 0.9, proposed ordinance 14-17, which is a second reading of hours of sale for off-sale liquor licenses, and we'll go to Mark for this.
The only change that, there's been no change in the ordinance, but late last week, the League of Minnesota Cities Office of General Counsel sent out a memo saying that in the, I suppose, in like the first portion of the special session, they did empower cities to not sell on Sundays. But that wouldn't change my recommendation or the recommendation of staff because of the uniformity of enforcement. We recommend that you follow what the, what the statute is now.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So we're okay with doing a second reading?
Correct.
Of this one? Okay?
But I, it was, it was late of last week that they came back and they said that the previous advice, that, you know, cities could, could foreshorten the hours but couldn't omit the days that the legislature had allowed, that it came back that, well, yeah, you could foreshorten the number of days too. But I think rather than foster confusion, we should just follow what the statute provides.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any questions of Mark on this? Jeff?
Mark, wasn't there some change as far as hours of service to 4:00 AM now? I think it's something due to the Super Bowl that they, they extended hours until 4:00 AM. Is that something we'll have to revisit or not?
I think that was metro.
I don't think it was all, I don't know if it was necessarily all metro.
I thought it wasn't just in the metro area.
Okay.
Was that for off-sale also?
That was just on-sale.
Okay. I'll have to look at that.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions?
It's kind of late for me to be out.
There being none, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve.
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion? There being none, this is an ordinance, so we look for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Voss.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. That completes our action items for tonight. We now move on to public comment. If anybody is in the audience would like to make a comment, they're free to do so. They can come up to the microphone, sign in, and please try to limit your comments to two minutes or less, two items not on the agenda. Here we have somebody.
Hello, my name is Brad Summanick. I live at 1495 Crestview Lane, Oatana, Minnesota. I've lived there for 15 years now. I've never had a problem with water in my basement until two years ago in November. And we got the problem, I'll fix. It's great, but I need my lawn restored. So here's what we got. My lawn, my neighbor's lawn, and I've called Kyle Scoville 10 times. He rarely returns my phone calls. I've talked to the mayor, he's a great guy. He tried to help. I know he is. So we got this. My lawn right now, it's all gravel, dirt, and rocks. No black dirt. They never brought any black dirt in. It's just a joke. I've called the MTCA today. Megan Hand is your representative from the MTCA, and Scott Fox. And I sent pictures to them. It's clay, rocks. There's rocks like that when they get done. So it should be such a minor issue, I shouldn't even be here wasting your guys' time. So I guess, I talked to lots of construction companies. I worked construction for 15 years now. There's no reason that when they reconstruct it and restore the lawn, you bring in black dirt. Four inches is a pretty standard black dirt. I'm not asking for money, I'm not asking for sod, just asking so I can have a lawn, so I can water my lawn, and have a lawn back so I can mow it like I have the last 15 years. So I don't know what we can do to help me out.
Chris, can we...[1617.25]
That's the way it was done back then or whatever. So, when that storm sewer plugged up, it was never maintained. There's no manhole. It's about 700 feet to the clear, nearest manhole down the street on the corner of Mineral Springs in Crestview. So, when it plugged up, nobody could find, figure out where it was plugged up at, why it was plugged up. And then every time it had rained, we'd get a rain of two inches or more, which is pretty standard nowadays, every three months, you know? The water would come down the storm sewer and back into my basement. So, but my basement's all fixed, I'm not worried about that. I just want to be able to mow my lawn.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll, we'll follow up on this, and...
Yeah, just, yeah, make sure I get, you know, that we, if you give me a name and number, I can give you a call back.